Yeah.
This is why, it's really important, you know, it's DOT regulations and once people hear like the
Yep.
Like a dollar regulation and they're okay with it.
Yeah.
Edits out?
I feel like the only thing that passed the doors was because we said it's not ADA compliant.
Are we good?
Everybody asked. Are they? We can use free money tonight.
Good, ready?
Never ready, but.
Good. Deanne's gonna be a few minutes late, so we'll, we'll start. Tricia, good?
Good.
Okay. It is June nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, six thirty-two PM, and we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. Uh, we're gonna start with the approval of our minutes. Um, do we have all of these minutes?
Not all of them.
No.
No, just Kathy's minutes.
Okay.
For...
Okay.
I saw them, they're on here, those three.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
The twenty-sixth.
Yeah, they're on here.
I'm sorry, yes, all of Kathy's are here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mine are not.
Okay.
But mine are executive session, so they don't come out now.
Alright. So is, uh, did everybody get a chance to look at these minutes?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve, uh, the minutes from May twenty-sixth first?
And I wasn't here.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so we'll table that. Um, hopefully Deanne's gonna be soon, so we can go back to it. How about, uh, June fifth?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of June fifth.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any edits or comments, questions? Go. All in favor to approve the minutes from June fifth, two thousand seventeen, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. June twelfth? Is there a motion to approve the minutes from June twelfth?
I was absent.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
You were here.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any comments or edits, any questions? Okay, all in favor to approve the minutes from June twelfth, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, we're gonna return to May twenty-sixth when, uh, Deanne comes in, uh, moving on to visitors' comments. Do we have any visitors who would like to speak? Okay, hearing none, uh, moving to student representative report, who I thought was going to be here today, but, uh, I don't know if it's weather related or not. Um, so we're, we're, we'll, if she comes back, if she, uh, comes and joins us, we'll, uh, go back to her. Upcoming business, does it mean this is new business?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a kindergarten policy that we already discussed and had the first reading. Um, what are we expect, second reading, any, anything different, anything else that is added? Okay, so are we expected to vote for this then, uh, tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, when we had discussed the new policy, we talked about having in there that they were supposed to have been in preschool, but I don't see it in the change to the policy. That it was supposed to be that they passed the screening and that they were in preschool for, cause you s- you had talked about that they had been in preschool for two years. I just wondered if there's a reason that's not there.
Yes. My, my, uh, I forgot to add.
That was about my question too.
Yeah, I know, that was really important to Deanne as well. That's what I was thinking, yeah.
And have, yeah. And have participated in two years of.
Okay, so we have to...
Wait on this one.
Wait on this because then it becomes the first reading of the amended version, or is there...
I would think once it's amended, we could approve it.
I think so.
Can we just amend it tonight and reread it later? Can we come back to it?
Well, one thing that I'm not sure is whether or not.
I think you can amend it tonight and then next.
I'm sure that this needs to happen pretty quickly.
Accept it and accept it next year.
And then vote on it next.
Alright.
Yes.
And that's...
You don't need to go through two more.
Right.
No, we don't.
Okay.
Right.
We don't, so, but we're, we're good with the updates, that's, that was the only change. And in terms of timeline, that still works for you, correct?
Yeah.
If we improve it next time?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so thank you, thank you very.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No.
No, that's fine.
I read through it three times before I came here, cause I'm like, am I, am I just not? Why am I, I'm like, am I reading it wrong? Thank you.
Um, we have a new position?
Yes, so, um, I, we have, I have a student who has, um, significant medical needs, who will be attending the College Snacks program at AIC. And, um, it's not something that a paraprofessional could do, they need somebody with medical training, um, in case of emergency. There are, there is a nurse at AIC, but it literally could, depending on where he is on campus, could take up to five minutes, um, for the nurse to get to the child, and at that point, um, it's life threatening.
Okay.
So I wanna hire, um, an LPN who would be able to administer, um, medication in the event that the child has a situation.
Um, so this is, someone is gonna be with this student, how many times a week?
Every day that he's at school.
So every day he will be there, or she will be there full-time at AIC?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay. Um, obviously this is not something we budgeted for, is that correct?
Um, of course I did.
You did? Okay, good.
Yes.
So we're good, there, there's no additional cost to it?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
And we're not transporting the student, so we're saving that money as well.
Okay. Yeah, I couldn't tell from the way it was written whether or not this was one of those positions we budgeted for or not, so I'm glad that it is.
Yes, so originally I budgeted for a different program for him, and then when they settled on this one, it worked out.
Okay.
So it's probably.
Good, good. Um, what do we need on this one, any, except for telling us, any vote, nothing?
Just... And that it's a need for me to hire.
All good? Okay, well you don't need a vote?
No.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Alrighty. That's good, I'm glad that it's in the budget. Um... Any questions?
No.
Okay.
What do you want to say?
Me too. What was that?
You said me too.
Oh, yeah.
Glad to know that it's in the budget.
Yeah, cause we had this, these conversations, and I know that you were budgeting for some of these, but I did not know whether this one was one of those situations that we already knew about. So it's good, it's good. Alright, thank you, Carol.
You're welcome.
Um, moving on to new business, introducing our new principal of Granby Junior Senior High School.
If I could ask, um, could we take A after B? Um, David has an appointment, but I did wanna give David an opportunity to, um, share the donation.
Of course. Come on over, Dave.
And that he receives.
Sorry, Steven.
That's fine.
How you doing?
Good, good. So once again, um, we were very fortunate to get another batch of donated equipment, um, from, as I told you last time, there's two agencies that are very generous with, uh, to us. This was the, the other agency, um, they gave, these are the inventory sheets, um, that contained what I had to sign for when I picked it up, and the value was seventy thousand four hundred nine dollars and seventy-two cents. Included in that were four file servers, each valued at over forty-seven hundred dollars. So, once again, this is something that is very unique to us. This is something, um, that, you know, we're not entitled to, we're very lucky and grateful that we get it. Um, if we didn't get it, um, you know, we would have some very, very, very serious shortfalls here. Um, it, it came at a very good time because, um, we have a situation on the, um, network that, um, I don't have a way go, after July one, I will not have a method to pushing out, uh, computer images to keep maintaining the workstations. And one of these file servers will, um, correct that problem.
Okay.
Once it's commissioned, which I'm hoping to do the first week of July. So, um, because that would've been another expense I would have to go to a superintendent for, which I don't have to now. I mean, we have to obviously buy some software and that, but, um, we don't have to buy the file server.
Okay.
You know, um, the laptops will allow us to do, other, there's a lot of laptops here, they will allow us to, uh, obviously to expanding, you know, the use of laptops in this building, so, um...
Dave, when you say this will help you with the computer imaging and all that, does it mean that this is a backup to make sure that if something is lost, you can...
No, actually, we, we actually have a good backup system in place already. Um, because the backup system, if you recall, failed about two years ago, and we had to replace it kind of like on, on an emergency, like one day it was work and the next day, you know, we had a major problem. But the imaging is, um, in order to maintain the, the proper functioning of computers, there are several different ways to do it. And one way is to image, which is to do a refresh, so like the classroom computers during summer, the C drives, hard drives get scrubbed, and they get a fresh installation of Windows, you know, Microsoft Office and all of the appropriate software.
Okay.
So the imaging is the process by which those data packets are pushed out. The solution we have, eh, right now, has failed and is dysfunctional, and we can't get it fixed.
Okay.
And, um, you know, uh, so it had to be, it had to be replaced. We'll have to buy the software, but the corresponding hardware will be covered for with, with, with this donation, which could've come at a better time.
Yeah.
So...
Cool, we're happy to hear that.
So, once again, um, um, that is, I mean, we have to vote to accept that, and, uh, uh, I will be, um, you know, probably coming again, uh, hopefully the next, uh, month, saying, hey, we got another patch of stuff, or another...
That's awesome, please come back very often.
Yeah.
So, but aside, just as a, uh, you know, looking ahead, because we're getting all this stuff coming in, we also have some older stuff that we need to go out, so probably next meeting, I'll probably be asking you to authorize me to get rid of stuff that's gonna be disposed of.
Okay. Yep, makes sense, so what is the, it says just donation of computers, is there anything else that we should be including in our motion to make sure that it is clear?
I think just accepting it, right? I think that's the policy, that you just have to accept the donation.
Accepting the, if it's just generic, they go with accepting donation of computers? Okay.
And then we send a thank you letter after we accept it.
Good, thank you for doing that.
I'll make a motion to accept the computer hardware.
Donation?
Donation.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, any questions for Dave, any comments?
I would, I would like to make, make a comment for the people who might listen to our meeting, that you said it's a unique situation that we get these donations, but the unique situation is you. And people in town need to understand that it's because you're putting so much hard work into getting these donations. So, I want, I wanna make sure people understand that.
Thank you for that.
You're saving a ton of money for us.
Yeah. I agree with that. Okay, so, um, all in favor to approve the computer donations, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good evening.
Excellent.
Okay, so...
Thank you for taking that out of order.
Absolutely, yeah. So we'll move back to, um, since, since we are moving out of order, should we just go back to the minutes and be done with that?
Sure.
We have Deanne here. Um, the minutes from May twenty-sixth. Did we all get a chance to look at it? Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes from May twenty-sixth?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any edits or comments, questions on this set from the twenty-sixth of May? Okay, all in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now go into new business, A.
A, yes, I would like to call, uh, Stephen Sullivan up and introduce Stephen to everyone.
To everyone.
Steve? Nice to see you.
Nice to see you again, everything.
So this evening, uh, we welcome Stephen Sullivan to the Granby Public Schools. Uh, I would like to take a minute to say thank you to the committee who spent countless hours in interviews and discussions to lead us to this point. Their efforts have resulted in a comprehensive search process that has brought Mr. Sullivan to Granby. And I'm gonna timeout, I think she would like you to sit at the end, so you get a mic.
Okay, you're better than I am. I'm not good at sign language, though, you know?
Thank you, Stephen.
Of course.
Um, Stephen earned his associate's degree from Holyoke Community College, um, and his undergraduate degree from the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth. Please correct me if I got anything wrong.
Right on.
Um, he earned his master's of arts degree from Fitchburg State College. Uh, Stephen comes to Granby from Holyoke Public Schools, where he began as a teacher at Dean Technical High School. He then became an assistant principal at Holyoke High, and has been serving as principal of Holyoke High School since two thousand and fourteen. Uh, Stephen has been instrumental in developing educational pathways for students, ensuring all students are on a path toward graduation. And he has also introduced a ninth grade academy to focus on student success during the transition from middle school to high school. Um, and those were, um, projects and programs that, um, the committee was very interested in hearing about, um, as we move forward. So, without further ado, I'd like to welcome Stephen, and, um, we're very excited to be moving forward.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome to see.
Appreciate it, nice to see you again, thank you. And, uh, I'd like to thank you and thank Cheryl and the committee as well. I, I said to her a few times, from the first time that Kathy reached out to me and till the final part of the process, it was a professional and, um, genuine process, and, um, I really appreciated that, and I'm looking forward to getting to work. I was here, actually I spent a day last week, um, meeting with staff and some students, and really starting to acclimate myself to the school and then the community. And, um, that's first on my priority list, is to make sure that people know me, and I know the people of the community, and, um, what their wants and needs are, and how I can support them, so I'm looking forward to the work.
And that is the expectation in our little town.
I look forward to it.
And the acclamation happens very quickly.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great.
And Stephen is a father of one, two-year-old?
Father of, I'm, yeah, Piper will be two July seventh.
And...
We're expecting our second daughter in late July.
Oh, wow.
Congratulations.
This is time.
Yes, busy time.
My gosh.
That's right, so, but, I can, I can work mobily, I can... So...
Hey, don't push now.
We're also excited about two future students for the, uh, Granby Public Schools.
That's right.
Do we have anything else with Steve, what, we don't wanna take your whole evening if you cannot stay?
Um, we will have Steve back, um, probably in September.
Okay.
Once he has, uh, been part of the leadership team, once he's met his staff, um, to sort of do almost like, um, what I'm doing, and it's not on the agenda, but my entry plan.
Yeah.
Stephen will do one, uh, for the high school. I think the needs are unique, um, at the high schools, so, um, give Stephen time to, uh, learn about the school, learn about the students, learn about the families, and then present his ideas, uh, later in September.
Do you mind if I throw a little curveball?
Yes.
Uh, hopefully it's not too much of a curveball. Um, you're coming on board July first, correct?
Correct.
So if there is anything between then and the start of school that, you know, you collectively bump into, that makes sense for us to, uh, address, that would be, that would be absolutely a good opportunity to talk about that. Uh, I don't suppose, since you're just coming in, your summer is gonna be a downtime, but, uh, if there is anything, any opportunity, we're always open to listen to it and...
Great.
And take action if necessary.
Great, and like I said, my first priority is to get to know the people in the community, and, um, I'll send out some information in early July about office hours that I'd like to have to welcome people here, and for myself to get out into the community, to meet people at various locations and events, um, that are happening in Granby, so...
Go sit at Dunkin' Donuts, you're good.
At the senior center.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Dunkin' Donuts, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll check those off early.
Breakfast at Dunkin', and then lunch at senior center.
Okay, alright, that sounds good, sounds like a plan.
Well, welcome aboard again.
Thank you, and I am looking forward to it, and I appreciate your time tonight.
No, thank you, thank you for being here.
Thanks for coming.
Welcome.
Take care.
Okay. So, um, oh, Carol headed out, so, uh, nurse leader C, uh, we have been working through, um, the hiring process again for the nurse leader. And, oh, would you like to give your announcement? So, oh, not the sitting at chair, I think it's really loud enough, but...
I think cause the air conditioner's on, it's probably...
Tricia, you started a trend here. That's good.
I like to see faces. Awesome.
Yeah, we, we always see them, but we, we... I know.
Back of the head.
Well, that's what it was, I thought you were doing an offensive foul type of thing, and I didn't get it, you know?
Oh my god, that's hysterical. Um, so I am happy to announce that Nancy Jenks is returning as, uh, the Granby Nurse Leader.
Nice.
She met with Cheryl and I, we had a great conversation, she met with the nurse, um, nursing staff, and they're happy to have her return.
Excellent.
It's good to hear.
Great.
Yep, great.
So the team is, is...
Backed.
As July one, that'll, that's exciting. We have to be able to hit the ground running.
Okay, so she's starting on July first as well.
Yep.
Okay, that's good.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That's good.
It actually feels nice, you know?
Right?
Yeah. Anything else that we need to do about that, is just an announcement?
Nope, nope, we just announced, um...
Well, good, that's it, that's good.
Awesome.
To have her back, thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, we're, we're happy, and she's back as well. Have decided our schedule for meeting sessions.
I don't have anything.
I don't think so.
There's nothing on the calendar, so, we have to decide with...
I automatically drive here every, every Monday now, so...
I know, right?
I know.
I don't know.
But the third, I just, I would, I would ask us not to do the third.
No, no.
No.
I won't be here.
And I propose the seventeenth.
I won't be here.
If we're not in a hurry, then, you know, that's good, we can do it, wait on.
Yeah, so, but when we talk about calendar, um, we should talk about our, our dates for...
Um, we, we should also follow up on the, um, physician who oversees the prescribing, because...
That was actually my question, I know where we are with that one.
The, the physician.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'll check with...
Because I think the contract is up at the end of June, is that right?
That's, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, June, so we just need to know if it's gonna be the current prescriber, or...
Or if we're gonna need a new one.
Because we updated the job description and contract, all that stuff, so...
The contract.
I will, I will speak to the current acting nurse leader.
Okay, that would be great, because we don't really want, I, I think we're not supposed to lapse or something like that, right?
Well, yeah, because you need someone to sign the orders.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's important.
I will put that right in my calendar for tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Alright, school committee retreat.
Yes, I would like to propose, um, that, uh, we spend some quality time, um, reviewing goals, um, and the strategic plan, um, perhaps at some point over the summer, um, so that we can have a real concerted effort at, um, revising the strategic plan, um, and also setting the goals for next school year.
Sounds good, what's a good point for us to meet?
Does it have to be a formal meeting?
Um, it would be like the workshop that we did with Dorothy Presser, so certainly people could attend, um, but it would be more, um, around the table, um, work with goal-setting and the strategic plan.
So a couple of questions, will, will we have a facilitator?
We could, absolutely.
Okay, and it, you know...
We could not, we could...
Yeah. Um, but I, I, either way, we can probably have the conversation, I don't mind facilitating parts of it, um, or all of it, depending on what it is. But I know that everybody can do part of the facilitation.
It might not be keeping him on track.
Uh, the, I'm actually pretty good at facilitating. The second question is, do we need participation from folks outside the school committee? Since we're talking about updating, um, our strategic plan, I would hope so, as you're nodding.
Yes.
And how are we going to do that at what point, do you have any suggestions?
Right, so I think if we're in agreement, uh, regarding a retreat for goal-setting and revising the strategic plan, whatever date that is, I would try to, uh, bring that group together prior to get their feedback.
Okay.
And lead a discussion of where the current plan is, um, what we've done this year and last year in terms of implementing many things in the strategic plan, um, and some things that maybe are as impactful as they, uh, thought they might have been, and some revisions, and then bring that to, um, our meeting, um, as we move forward.
Yeah, I, it seems to me, just a very quick last thing, just, it seems to me that as far as our mission and vision, we're not gonna make changes to that, we're, we're there.
Yeah, definitely not.
So, uh, where, where we're gonna start is, uh, the old SWOT, new SWOQ, uh, analysis, so if we can get to that, because some of those elements changed.
Yes.
Then we can just, uh, facilitate that conversation and get to, uh, where we need to be, uh, fairly quickly, probably a couple of sessions, uh, with everyone, we shouldn't be there.
Yep.
Cool, alright, so, it's summertime, and this was an incredibly busy stretch of, uh, meetings. So without imposing on anyone, if every, if there's a way for us to...
Do a doodle?
Make that, do a doodle and make some suggestions, uh...
Sure.
What would be a good point during the summer, uh, to meet, that would be great. Thank you. Did you want me to speak about the next one, E? Okay, so, um, we've been talking about the revisions to the foundation budget, and, um, the review to the foundation budget, uh, had been submitted, uh, a long time ago, it was October two thousand fifteen. Now, uh, the House and Senate, they are, uh, picking it up, uh, but what appears to be the case that, um, I thought everybody was on board, and verbally they are, but, uh, some folks have not signed on yet, um, whether it's representatives or senators. Number two, as we have seen in the case of charter school votes, it makes a lot of difference when school committees come together and say, this is, this is what we are supporting, and what we would like our, uh, elected officials, uh, to support on our behalf as well. So what I have here, I, uh, suggested to add to our, um, agenda, is a discussion on the foundation budget review, uh, commission, and, uh, make your recommendation with a vote that our committee is supporting the effort that is, uh, going on around, uh, those revisions. Uh, again, this is a suggestion, if, uh, the school committee does not feel, um, informed enough to be able to vote tonight, that's fine as well. But if you had an opportunity to look at the links that I, uh, shared with you, and you think that those were, uh, sufficient for us to be able to vote on this, uh, I would be happy to entertain that too.
I think we're all pretty privy to the fa- foundation budget issues, I'm, I'm fine with voting on it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm ready. Yes.
Yeah.
Mine too.
Yes, yes.
And I, I think to this committee's credit, uh, I've been having some conversations, uh, with a lot of folks involved in, uh, schools, school committees and all that. I am really impressed with the amount of knowledge that the committee has in terms of the process. Uh, something actually as convoluted, I will call it, as the foundation budget process, um, so I appreciate that everybody took the time to, uh, look at those, uh, suggested, uh, changes. So, if there is no other, uh, comments, we can go and vote on this. Uh, and once we're done with the vote, we'll let MASC know, so that they can add us to their list of schools that approved, uh, this recommendation. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other comments, discussions, questions? Well, good, so all in favor to approve the recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Um, next item is about our potential participation as a district in Granby to, uh, Granby's two hundred and fiftieth, um, anniversary activities. Uh, we were, we were asked on different occasions, uh, one of them was whether or not we wanted to have a float, I guess. None of them obviously are, uh, mandatory, but how do we, how do we contribute to these events that are, uh, uh, pretty significant for our town, and what those activities might be, any suggestions? It doesn't just have to be what is out there, is there anything creative that we can, uh, suggest and be part of these festivities?
I have a suggestion.
It doesn't just have to be what is out there. Is there anything creative that we can, uh, suggest and be part of these festivities?
I have a suggestion.
Yeah?
I would love to see a teachers reunion where our, all of our former teachers could have a.
Good. That's a great idea.
An appreciation or something from the town, because that, you know, you run into people you went to school with and that's what you talk about, your old teachers.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's.
And we're friends with some of them on Facebook, you know.
And yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's interesting you say that because, um, for our last day, um, we have just sent letters to all of the retirees to come back.
That's so cool.
On the last day, uh, for a celebration of the school year, um, with current staff and with retired staff, so it would fit right in, um, certainly, uh, next year.
Yes. Yep. Yeah, teachers and staff. I mean, we, I run into the old janitors and, yeah, it'd be awesome.
Yep. Yep.
Cool. Should we entertain the idea of having our own school department float? Is that something that makes sense for us? Okay, good.
I was gonna say, with our flag. Um, so Cheryl and I have been talking about, um, you know, ever since we went to the State House, having, seeing if the, um, district can create a two hundred and fiftieth commemorative flag that would be in the great hall, uh, of the State House, and I found out from, uh, the two fiftieth committee that we have to go to the select board and ask them, um, talk to them about it, because it is a, it's a town flag. It's official, so, um, I'm going to take that up. I just talked to Cheryl about that today. So I'm gonna take that up and, uh, see what we can do there, and as soon as we get permission and any guidelines they might have, then Cheryl is very excited to work on that with the kids.
Mm-huh.
And the idea being, maybe it would be on our float, they would have it in the parade, and then she would have a, uh, school bus full of kids go and present the flag to the, to the State House.
Oh, they would love that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, the way that was presented was they were gonna fly it at the State House for the day, too, okay?
Right. Oh, I don't know about that.
Well, that, well, that's the way Miss was talking about it.
No, it didn't, maybe she just didn't.
Yeah, we might want to.
I don't know that, I don't know that that can happen, but it's the great hall where all the, the town flags are, and it would stay up, so.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's not temporary, it just stays.
For the year.
It will, and I think it act, they actually just keep it until, I think they keep it until you do something.
It stays for the year?
Until you do something.
Yeah, because, because those couple of towns that we saw, they still had their flag from their, uh, significant years, yeah.
Because.
Yeah. Right.
From their commemorative, yeah.
So in essence, it is flying.
Right.
Yeah.
It's just not on a flagboard.
It's not outside, yeah, it's it's inside in the great hall.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Do you know when the select board is meeting?
It's the same one day as we meet.
Yeah, same one day as we meet, so I'll, I'll send a note to, uh, Mark Bale and or and Chris probably and see if we can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think they start about half hour before we do. They start at six o'clock, so we may be able to squeeze.
Maybe.
They start at six thirty.
Six thirty.
Six thirty, okay.
Hmm.
All right.
So, so the other thing that was mentioned briefly by, uh, one of the teachers that was here for the last meeting, um, and I know the two hundred and fiftieth celebration committee is looking for some firm responses becau- uh, is is with regards to, uh, the bonfire.
Mm-huh.
Because they've got Kix radio station standing on hold, waiting to get permission to really do a big, you know, all out blast with that.
Oh, right, yeah.
Mm-huh.
So I don't, I don't know how, how that gets gets brought up here.
Yeah, maybe we can ask Crystal again what that means.
So, yes. Yeah, we will, we will do a formal proposal because there are details that it would be much different than what it has been.
Mm-huh.
Um, so we would have to outline those.
Yep.
Okay. I think the overall response to this one was that, yes, we would like to be part of it, and we can start with that. I think, um, Tammy Bebo is in charge of the floats. I will let her know that we are considering to be part of it with a float. Uh, rest of it, you will have an opportunity to speak to the, uh, retired teachers and mention it to them for next year.
And I'll volunteer to help to plan that. I mean, I'll, I'll take that on. I wanted to do something for the two fiftieth anyway, so this is a great way to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a parade on the?
Yes, and then, and then the other, uh, the other question was getting a commitment out of the high school band to be in it, because it would look really poorly.
Yes.
That's what I was saying.
Hmm.
Okay.
When is that? Do we know the date?
It'll be the second full weekend of June, the Sunday. Yeah, it's on that Sunday.
Around charter days?
Yeah, I can tell you.
I, that weekend.
That weekend?
Yep, so that Sunday.
It's that Sunday.
It's Sunday?
Yeah, and the parade's gonna start at the common.
So this same Sunday of charter days?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
The second Sunday, June eighth.
Second full week, second weekend of the full we- full week, it's gotta be, yeah.
Oh. The fiftieth.
I'll get a commitment. I'm I'm pretty sure that Greg, they've already reached out to Greg, um, because I think there's other points of the year where they're asking for music as well, so.
And you'll get a letter? Yep, and I think you're, you're about to get a formal letter or or something in the mail, you know, about that.
Okay. Okay.
We may actually be able to have some, uh, former members of the band and stuff too, because if we only rely on the current students, the seniors will already be out.
Right.
Uh, by then, but it may be a good way to bring those who can come back and play their instruments, so maybe a bigger band too.
Mm-huh.
I wonder if they could be the last band at Dufray, like a concert.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
Yeah.
Cause they have the band.
All right, good, so we have, we have a lot of, uh, options here, it seems, so we can, all right.
I don't know about that.
Are you on the two fifty?
Yeah, I I barely make it to those meetings, but I'm on charter day, so either way, it's all mixing in at this point.
Okay, all right, so maybe we can channel some of these things or, you, okay, cool. Anything else? All good, okay.
Right.
Uh, the last item in this section is related to, uh, G-CAM, our, uh, Granby, Granby Community Access and Media. Uh, and it's a discussion on creating a media club or a program, and I know that Tricia, who, uh, is here, uh, joining us this evening, has been, uh, working on that idea for a while, and she, uh, relentlessly brought it back, uh, several times, so, um, I guess this is, this was supposed to be the time for us to discuss it.
Okay.
All right, so do you, I know that you brought those ideas a few times. Do you have anything that you can share with us as far as what we can do at this point?
Um, Steven Sullivan is now a member of G-CAM, so.
Yeah, that's a good start.
He's now on my agenda to reach out and, uh, discuss getting students involved, as as is Cheryl. I was waiting till budget season was over to bug her about some more.
I'll have your card.
But, you know, having Cheryl maybe start up the superintendent's corner again, um, like Isabelleina started, but maybe having students crew it, I'll train them, and then maybe have students crew a couple, you know,
Yes.
a couple camera shoots or something, and have them more involved, just getting, um, more students and, you know, having conversations with the school department and different, different, you know, Cheryl, about getting teachers involved even in G-CAM so that, because they have the student's ear, student access more so than, like, direct student access more so than I do, so getting cameras in the classroom, getting teachers aware that, you know, they can use our resources and, um, free training, things like that, um, talk about continuing education credits or things like that, that teachers might be interested in, uh, and that we can probably provide, um, as ways to get students and teachers and more people involved.
Yeah.
Um.
So I will, uh, first recuse myself from this conversation because I'm on the board of G-CAM, so I will not really be part of any decision made, uh, related to this. But, uh, aside from that, as a member of that board, uh, I also, and correct me if I'm wrong, I also think that there would be an interest in supplying some of the equipment to, uh, jumpstart any effort on the side, uh, the the, do the training, um.
Yeah, no, our equipment and training is free for members, um, anybody that who lives or works in Granby can get in touch with me, can, um, get trained on the equipment, can check out the equipment, and, you know, you can check out the equipment for a few days at a time, things like that. If there is an interest in specific types of equipment for specific programs, I'm happy to entertain, um, purchases. Um, I just got a small camera kit for the, like, for little kids. Uh, Jen Silva does an after-school program and, um, was interested in, in getting kids involved, and the younger they're involved, the happier I am, so I got this kind of kit, and, um, there's a teacher at McDuffie who may be interested in using it first in, like, her, her classes. So there's programming that way, and there's training, and there's, you know, getting the cam, getting cameras in the hands of kids and, um, getting them aware and involved in getting more programming for the channels.
Mm-huh.
Does this also apply to other, uh, committee meetings where you're trying to get kids more involved, or or is this something that's specifically to the schools?
Nope, it's for the town. I I re- record select board meetings, school committee meetings, school building committee meetings regularly. Um, I don't have bodies to record more meetings. Like, I'd love to record finance committee and board of health and planning board and conservation commission. Um, it's a volunteer organization. If there are people who will take a camera to these meetings,
I would too. I would love that. Volunteers.
I'll train you, I'll show you how to do it, I'll give them a heads up.
Maybe I'll volunteer for that. That would be interesting.
Yeah, it's it's harder, I think, for students, the younger, you know, kids to be out that late for the meetings, so I, you know, I I find there's, there's some blocks there. They have homework, they have, um, sports commitments and things like that. Um, I've been thinking about, uh, doing, um, trying to maybe potentially hire another body for, like, on a part-time basis for a couple hours a week. I've talked to my board about that and, you know, and do an employee handbook and things like that.
Working on a side job.
But it is, it's things I've been toying with in order to try to get, like, more meetings covered in the town. Um, not the first time I've heard people would like to see more meetings covered, um, but, uh, I'm working on it. It's on my, it's on my to-do list, but, you know, we're a small staff, we're part-time, we're, but we're, I try to be flexible and accommodating to people who have needs that wanna record events, and we're trying to, we also are covering events in town and, um, um, just trying to be as inclusive as we can with.
That was close. That was a nice bolt of lightning right behind you. So, thanks to my, from the student perspective, um, obviously, I think, working with Steven and, um, and Ally, uh, with our, uh, community service, um.
Yeah, I I've had conversations with Ally about that.
Um, but, yeah, so we actually have students who are enrolled in courses that, um, this would fit right in with, and I think just developing some of the procedure protocol and what that looks like, um, I think will, uh, that's where I see the program growing in terms of during the day, um, but then also, um, uh, working with Steven and the kids around, is this, uh, a co-curricular club, uh, much like a yearbook where they could, you know, go, um, and, you know, become members, um, and, you know, use the equipment and develop programming, um, because they are so media savvy.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that, I think we could create some volunteers for you, but also some great experience for our students as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I've been talking to Greg off and on about trying to get into his theater club too, to get performances, because they they have actually, I found that for some performances, you can actually buy the video rights, so we can record that as where in the past we haven't really been able to because of copyright.
Yes.
I wonder if we can integrate some of it with the two hundred and fiftieth conversation that we had, uh, some, some Granby-related programming, some history of Granby type of, uh, program.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, George is working on some projects. I know he's got some stuff going on with the kids. George and and Micheline have, I've got them doing a two hundred and fiftieth update, like, um, once or twice a month and kind of keeping the, the community informed.
He had also come in, was doing a book, kind of a story book, um, so the kids could tell their stories, uh, that would be really interesting.
Yeah, he's doing a, a book, an update, he's. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so this media club would have something kind of structured?
It would be neat to have a TV show or.
So, the way a media club would work is, um, I would probably need a teacher to run it, and I would work with the teacher, speak directly, and, um, that person would be in charge of the kids or in charge of, I mean, I have no problem coming to some meetings, but every, I like, clubs meet, yeah, clubs meet weekly. That gets a little difficult,
Once a week. Yeah.
with my, with my scheduling, um, but, I mean, I can certainly be there for feedback and occasionally for, you know, coming in and for training and, I ca- I'm even happy to drop off equipment, you know, a quick in and out and things like that for events, um, but that, the way I would see it is that it, the, the person in charge of the club would structure it.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for Tricia? Actually, we're running this.
Any other questions for Tricia?
We will be in touch more formally, uh, to, to brainstorm, um, more details, so.
Okay, okay.
Mm-huh.
Okay, excellent.
It would, it would be great. Yeah, I was gonna say, it'd be great if the kids could, if they, if they did have a club, if they could be filming the things for the two fiftieth all year, so that by the end.
Yeah.
All year, yep.
That would be awesome. I would love that. And I've actually, um, I've put it out there once or twice before about if the kids are interested in recording their, it's like student government meetings and things like that. I'd be happy to put them on G-CAM. That's, that's what we're for, is to, you know, get them,
It's a great idea.
let them have, you know, that voice, so, um, just a quick question, does, is there a media policy?
Yes.
Does the school have?
Mm-huh.
Okay.
Yes, and we have parental sign-offs.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's my question, but.
Our policies are online.
Okay, I'll go start changing.
Uh, but if you want us to dig it out for you, we can.
I can, I can find it online. I just hadn't had, I hadn't gotten to it yet, but I may have wanted to ask about it.
Yeah, let us know how easy it is.
Okay, to find it?
No, seriously, yeah, I wanna, I wanna know, just curious how easy it is you find it to navigate.
Okay, all right, I'll do that. Okay.
Great idea.
And you'll, you'll want to look at not only school committee policy, but you'll wanna look at the employee handbook and the student handbooks.
Okay.
Because each of them have information regarding media.
Okay, good to know. All right.
How we would fit into that.
Cool.
Cool.
Anything else?
Thank you, Tricia.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, that is all we had for new business. Now moving on to old business. With the strategic plan and review, I think we already, uh, talked about that, so,
Yep.
uh, we'll start the revision process soon. I wonder if some of the things that we've been sharing as far as how we are seeing all the programs coming together, part of which was, uh, included in that flyer, is something that we should formalize and then make part of our, uh, part of our conversation going forward. Not necessarily, you know, it shouldn't become our, uh, strategic plan, but those are some of the things, some of the initiatives that are, uh, part of the roadmap, so we can, we can talk about that. Anything else, uh, anybody wanted to discuss under strategic plan and review? Okay, next item is related to food, Chartwell's. I think.
Everybody's favorite topic.
Yes.
So, one of the things, uh, that we did was because the Chartwell's contract is coming up for renewal, and what traditionally happens is we have a contract, and then DSE, uh, DSE Nutrition Area usually allows a contract and two renewals, and this would be the second renewal under the contract that we had for, um, FY sixteen, so sixteen contract, which was in the year packet for the last meeting, and now we have seventeen and now eighteen, and, uh, so there's a copy in the packet that I gave you and also, um, on the Google Drive of the amendments for the eighteen contract, and one of the things that's more significant, and you probably noticed, is that the break even would be a fifteen thousand four hundred and seventeen dollar loss, and there are elements that create that, and so I had asked, um, Mike Edgar, who's the district manager for Chartwell's, and Andrew Stratton, who of course is our food service director, to kind of come in and talk about some of the drivers for, for those costs, so that, because obviously I know school committee has been very focused on, on managing the, the food service deficit, particularly with the, the history in the town, so, you know, as we go forward and look at this contract, obviously there are, there are pressures on their budget as well as there's pressures on our budget, so I asked them to come in and talk about that.
And I think, and we appreciate the time to come speak to everybody, because it is, it can be very confusing. I think it's important to realize that our contract is a projection for next year. It's really a worst-case scenario because it includes everything from the projected enrollment drop to all the inflationary factors for food, labor, medical insurance. But it's our job over the next fourteen months to manage that and mitigate any loss to the school district, and that's, a great example is last year. Last year's same renewal contract was just about ten thousand three hundred dollars, a s- a subsidy, a loss. Andrew and his team did a great job and really adjusted the program, adjusted their menus for participation, where it would have come in as a positive program in the black, except for some unbudgeted expenses such as the West Street renovation.
East, East Meadow.
East Meadow, sorry, where we're incurring some extra labor, and food cost is a little higher because of the USDA commodity program, and then a change in the high school service period was extended. So that brought us back down to the negative. We should end this year about losing ten thousand, but not because of Andrew's program or our program. It is our job to manage it. So, yes, we're projecting fifteen thousand. Most of that is because of the enrollment drop, which isn't final until students are in school in September, but this is a worst-case scenario. That's, that's where Mark and I began our discussions, and I wanted to make it clear. Andrew has a little summary of this year, if you have the time and you wanna hear Andrew. He's, he's.
This little dude loves to hear about.
His public speaking skills are getting better every year, but that's, that's it in the synopsis.
Well, thank you. Uh, two sheets or at least one that you received, we're focusing on, uh, this year versus last year, and from the top, uh, day's operation. This is as of May, the end of May. So, we're, we're still finishing off June. It's going fairly well. We had two nice field days. We dodged a bullet on Friday with, uh, Dufray, the, uh, Dufray Park with East Meadows and got it done before the rain came, um, so it just highlights some of the differences between the years. Some of the participation is, is, um, down two percent, uh, overall. Um, we've worked hard at East Meadow. Uh, one of the unbudgeted things was renovating the kitchen during the school year. The district's main location for housing, uh, frozen. The district's main location for housing frozen commodities that we get monthly from USDA was at East Meadow. And before the start of April break, we were cut off from that. They had to start, in order for them to be hopefully ready by September and opening of school, they had to start renovations. And we weren't able to use the, the freezers in there for April and May's commodities that we usually get. And it's at a discount compared to buying it.
May I add something?
Sure.
When you look at the participation numbers, it's important in this year and from what we understand going forward, participation is the number of students that are buying the school lunches. And you see the percentage is down year over year, but you see the à la carte dollars is significantly up. And what we've seen is many of the free families are now afraid to fill out the paperwork with the current administration. So they're, they're spending their cash, but they wanna be off the radar. So we're anticipating those numbers being even worse next year because of the fear factor that's out there. But you can see it in these numbers where the à la carte, the state of Massachusetts has very strict à la carte healthy guidelines. There isn't a lot we can sell besides fresh fruit and water. So to see such a big spike has to be an extenuating circumstance.
And it is higher at the high school. It's a bigger school. Plus the, a lot of, some of the older kids that participate in sports actually get two lunches. The first would be a reimbursable lunch. The second would fall under à la carte. But at East Meadow, we've worked hard with no kitchen and no serving line to set up temporary, borrowed a warmer from East Hampton. And we sort of made the best of it. And the kids have, the participations held up, which was good. We were, I was slightly fearful that it would drop, but working with Bill and the custodial staff, and we've been able to keep it fairly normal as far as the hot food coming, cause we have to cook it over here at the high school and send it over. But there were some increases in, in labor in that and some of the, the meal costs between the two, about three thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars. At the end of, or projecting for the end of June as far as East Meadow. The half an hour increase in the lunch schedule for the high school that occurred when we came back in August. For the year, it's gonna be about eight thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. So with those and the projected of loss of nine thousand to ten thousand, we would be a lot closer if not in, in the black, if we didn't have those two occurrences. So we've been working hard towards the, the break even. We'll do the same thing next year. We've worked with John and Mark on hopefully mitigating as much of the half an hour break. And we should be able to trim some labor for next year here at the high school.
We're also winding up a survey to all the parents in Granby. I was talking to Andrew, Jay, we need to send out a reminder. Keep it open for two more weeks. We've only had about ninety responses from all the families. So it'd be nice to get a few more responses and then we'll create an action plan for the program to start in Au- in August.
Cheryl, is there any way that we can follow up with an email blast, asking parents to please respond to this survey? That, that might be helpful in getting more responses.
I agree. Good idea.
So, so when did the half hour increase take, take effect at all? Call.
So it was a change in the high school schedule at the beginning of the year that was unanticipated by Chartwell's.
What is that gonna, what's the schedule gonna look like going forward? Do we know that?
Uh, there's a slight change. So instead of it being thirty minutes, I think it's eighteen minutes past twelve at this point. So that will save some.
And how about the ten, the ten minute break? Is that back?
That had come back and they're gonna adjust it. So instead of two separate ten minute breaks, there's gonna be one ten minute break for the whole school. So we're going to hopefully be able to accommodate the students for breakfast all at once. We're, we're gonna try a couple things without increasing labor to be able to give them a chance to grab something to eat during a shorter time.
I'm telling you, that ten minute break is a home run.
Yeah, it is.
We, we have gotta find a way to make sure that that's, you know, these kids are up at six o'clock in the morning. There's, that's a no-brainer.
And we had done a try to breakfast before school started and we hardly had any.
They're not even awake yet.
So if, I mean.
They're like zombies.
The two, two separate ten minute periods was, was good. Hopefully we'll be able to accommodate all the students and there'll be, we might even open up two lines just to make it faster.
Yeah, because if, you know, the more you can accommodate, the more, the more we're gonna unload.
Yep. And it's, you know, having them ready for class is the main reason to have it. The two breakfast programs. We started West Street mid-year this year and it's gone very well. We're gonna, East Meadow, it's sort of stagnant. We're opening in September to have a new menu and sort of brighten it and kick it off. Uh, West Street's going very well. The, the students and the parents have responded to that.
And what, you know, what is the philosophy on, on coffee in high school?
On the state Department of Public Health, there's not supposed to be any caffeinated drinks sold in schools. And that's why we have no tea, iced teas or anything like that. So.
They even ruled decaffeinated ninety-nine point nine nine, still includes that point oh oh one.
And now are these the same people who are having coffee in the morning as they're writing this policy?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
We're hoping, we're hoping to see maybe a few changes come through with the administration. They are, they've already rolled back the sodium restrictions that were coming our way. They're not on the radar anymore. We're really praying that the whole wheat, whole grain restriction is relaxed a little bit. We don't wanna go back to any, anything close to unhealthy meals, but pizza is no longer, you know, a treat.
Cause it's a whole grain crust and it's not, they're not used to it. That, the hamburger rolls, the hot dog rolls, those are fairly, the kids don't mind them. They have gotten used to it, but especially the pasta.
All wheat, whole grain.
The pasta, the pasta, even though we use one of the top brands, Barilla, the kids just don't like even, I mean, with, you know, mac and cheese with sort of a brown pasta with a, a extra bite to it. So we're hoping out of anything, if we could bring back the, the white pasta, won't be as healthy, but hopefully the kids will, you know, we, we would sell more, you know, spaghetti and meatballs if, or mac and cheese if the, the grains were eased like that. And we're hoping to see that happen. Did you have a question?
I have a couple questions, I'm sorry. The breakfast program, you say that was, that was, so was that the biggest at the West Street School?
Uh, well, the high school has a fairly good, around sixty to seventy students have a reimbursable breakfast each, each day. Uh, at West Street, I believe it's around forty a day. And at East Meadow, it's closer to twenty. But West Street, we didn't know what to expect, cause we were just opening up. Bill had done some surveys with parents to see if there was interest and there was enough, so it's, it's covering the cost there.
I wonder if part of that is due to the, of the children's first being in there and some of the parents dropping off early. I don't know how, how many kids are in that program, but has it dropped off before school?
I don't think it's the children's first in the morning.
I don't know either. What, what, is it preschool, school or?
Yeah, that's, that's why I was bringing it up. It's not there in that shape.
Is it preschool or is it all grains? Okay, so they would be open to it that hopefully, cause they are doing a breakfast in the classroom where they come by our, our cashier and bring the breakfast to the classroom. So that might be supporting it fairly well.
And then the other question I had was that extra half hour, was, was an extra seventy-one hundred dollars? Is that the way I was reading?
Uh, at, at, at the end of May, it was around seven thousand. By the end of June, it, it'll be around eight thousand three hundred and thirty.
Okay, I'm just making sure I was reading that note correctly.
Yep, yep, that was it.
So I'm looking at amendment number two here, and I see thirteen thousand and then fifteen thousand in parentheses. I'm assuming it's a typo. I would much prefer the thirteen thousand, but I just thought I would confirm it's fifteen. Okay.
Still working. Yes, it must be a typo.
Okay.
So, Marie, you have the questions?
Uh, one of them was that one. And also on, on page two, number six, it says that there'll be a price increase, but it doesn't give an amount. Whereas last year's had an amount that I think we approved as a school committee.
I don't believe.
I, no, we, we weren't recommending a, a price increase. I believe that's why it's blank. Uh, I think that might just be a template on the renewal form.
But I mean, it's a contract, so I don't wanna sign, I wouldn't wanna sign something that says there'll be a price increase.
Your, every, we do the price equity review, which is the October meal counts to stay ahead of the mandatory minimum. And Granby was ahead of that minimum. Man, two ninety-eight, I believe your average was two ninety. So you're ten cents ahead. Um, there would be no need.
Right. So that, so I mean, that shouldn't be in there, just so that we're not agreeing to something that isn't.
I will have legal revise that, yet send it to Mark.
There are a couple of things here that caught my eye that I had not seen before. First of all, the student enrollment number is pointing to something like thirteen hundred plus in the current contract.
The original one?
The one that I'm looking at that's posted in our drive right now. So there are some inconsistencies. Probably it's copy paste issues from other contracts, but there are some inconsistencies. That is one. Number two, as we were meeting with the, the joint meeting with the finance committee, one of the items that came up and we discussed, was the fact that when you look at the food services cost per capita, we are one of the most expensive across the state. At least the DESI numbers that they were sharing with us was, was showing.
You're talking about lunch price?
I don't know about the, the breakdown or that, but that's something that I would like to explore more to better understand what that means.
I'd be happy to if I knew what benchmarks were being compared.
Okay.
We're comparing high school meal price. Ours is three dollars. I would say seventy-five to eighty percent of the high schools in Western Mass have that, other than say a, a Hoyo or a Chicabee, where they're been working with the price equity to slowly raise theirs. The, the ones like Granby where we don't have, you know, seventy, eighty percent free reduce. Those school districts, Hampton, Wilbraham, I'm not sure where Hadley is, East Hampton, they're all around three dollars for their, their high school. I think North Hampton is three dollars for every school, not just their high school.
So, so it sounds like there's some conflict between the, the numbers here, between FinCom and what you guys are saying. So wouldn't it make sense?
It's not the FinCom's number either. It's just basically how they lump sum that section of the data.
Well, what I was gonna say was that FinCom should probably provide the source.
They did.
Do we know that right now?
Yeah. It's not their source. It's basically on DESI's side, some of the, some of the breakdowns.
Well, what I'm hearing from, from you is it sounds like you, you're not aware of, of these discrepancies.
Well, we can, we can point to what I am looking at and we can, we can discuss it that way.
Sure, if you send me a copy, cause I know there's some Eastern Mass schools that are higher than three dollars. They're three fifty or around there. So for Western Mass, we're right in the mix. I do have a list of them, not on me, but of other directors. We share our, our elementary and high school, middle school pricing, so I can share that with Mark and you can share it with the district, everybody.
We just need to confirm that we're in line with other districts of our size and in our local area. You know, I, I, we can't be comparing ourselves to, you know, Eastern Mass schools that are three times the size of us. So I would also like to know where these benchmarks are coming from.
Sure. So when we say food services, whatever we are including in that, first we should identify it, then maybe we can provide some more information to Andrew on that one.
Sure.
The last thing that I have is that I truly feel uncomfortable going with a fifteen thousand dollar, a budget that says fifteen thousand dollar deficit is our benchmark, is our, is our threshold, especially after the conversations that we had. And it, you know, this year, there, there is a contingency and we may or may not be within that. After all the difficult conversation that we had, and you guys probably are familiar with the town meetings where the cumulative deficit of food programs, we had to vote on that. We are in a situation and position and probably a duty to make sure that we are, we know everything that needs to be known around these programs. And this is something, some work that we have to do as well, to see how we can improve these things. I mean, year after year, just I, you know, us feeling nervous when we're having conversations around the lunch program, it doesn't make any sense. And it's not because of, you know, a hundred dollar here, two hundred dollars there, because at the end, the town rightfully will ask us what, what's happening around the lunch program. So I, I don't, I don't know that I am informed enough to really understand that, but we can start with at least looking at the details of that line. Maybe there is something that would help us to identify some of the components that maybe worked on. Uh, maybe we can, we can work on that. So in light of what we are seeing today, as of today, we are at this ninety-three, twenty-two deficit. Did you say you're thinking that this will, it will stay there at, at the end of June?
There to negative ten thousand. And like I said previously, if the East Meadow renovations and the high school change in, in the schedule, we'd be talking about one to two thousand in the black. So, I mean, that's fairly positive. Can we get there next year with the added costs of a, a new year? Maybe. The fifteen thousand is a worst-case scenario. And hopefully we can get back to here even lower as far as the negative balance.
And that will be good. What I will say is this though, the, the ten thousand is coincidentally or interestingly, is where we are in terms of the contingency that I believe we have. When we look at the fifteen thousand line minus the management fee, it is exactly that. So it seems to me that, it may or may not be the case, at least from my perspective, we are looking at that contingency as part of our overall budget. A contingency to me is something unpredictable happened and I have a contingency to, to encounter that. It seems like in our case, that contingency is always in play, always part of the calculation. And I would like to know more why. Why, why is that we're struggling so much, given that we're not the only school district that is losing students? Given that we're not the only school district in Western Massachusetts that is experiencing some of the things that we're experiencing. We are not making any changes or we are not seeing any changes to our circumstances with respect to our lunch expenses. That really, that really concerns me again, not necessarily because it is the largest item that we're discussing, but because of what we had to endure and what we had to respond to only a few months ago in front of the town.
And we still are.
And we still are, because, you know, folks don't forget that kinda stuff and, you know, they hold us to it and they should. But as a result of that, I would like to hold us accountable and do some more homework on what else can be done. And as, as we said, I, I will share what was, what was pointed out.
Great.
And let's see what we can do to dig a little deeper, maybe see some opportunities.
What, what do other towns that you work with that are similar in size, you know, what are their, what are their concerns? Do they use up their contingencies? Do they, do we fall in line with other towns? Are we outside the norms?
Your, your, Granby is not an outlier. Granby is in identical situations, fifty percent of the districts that I cover, where enrollment has eroded the revenue and the operating cost, the, the staff to turn on the lights and cook the food and the cost of the food per portion is at the critical mass, where there is almost not enough customers to pay for that. And this budget reflects, for instance, all labor, a hundred and sixty-eight days. But what Andrew did this year, his labor this year is coming in less because he didn't fill all the sick calls. If somebody was able to call out and he could juggle those bodies across the district, he did that. But I can't do that in a proper. But I can't do that in a proposed budget.
Right.
It's something the director does during the day.
He got creative during the school year, in other words.
He got creative, he gets, he'll get creative with the menus. The, we're asked to include consumer price index increases of three percent on food and paper, but we don't turn around and give that to the directors and say, you, you now, instead of a dollar per portion, you have a dollar three that you can spend. He needs to carry it forward and probably try to get it done with ninety-nine cents. Get, do more with less, because that's what we're being asked to do.
So the other fifty percent, are you saying there's a direct correlation between districts who aren't losing students, and it's that simple?
It's a direct line, it, it's a direct line. My worst district, um, I'm having conversations where they're losing close to fifty thousand. Because so many cafeterias are open serving so few students right now, which was not the case ten years ago. I mean, if I looked at, look at your enrollment trend over the last five years, down eight percent, down eight percent, then this is only five point seven, but it seems like this is the year where it's really impacting things. We got close to break even, we could taste it. Uh, unfortunately, this project had to show that. Um, and who knows, on September first, if the enrollment is half, we're down to a six thousand dollar loss.
So that's why we have to get creative with, um, increasing, uh, the revenue with the students that we have, right? With the ten-minute break and with, you know, offering more ways for students to eat during the school day.
Certainly.
It's that simple. If we can't bring in more students, then we want them to eat more.
We wanna give them every opportunity to.
And we will, we will try.
And I don't, you know what I mean. I'm not saying feed them hamburgers and pizza. I'm saying make sure that they,
You have to show me, right.
Right.
So they're not hungry when they go to class. I mean, this is a win-win. This is a win-win.
But this is not unusual in a smaller district with a low enrollment, where the free reduced population is also very low. You know?
Yeah.
You know, I know Hoyoke's much bigger. Hoyoke's, free is so large, they're, they're actually all qualified as free. There's no cash at Hoyoke anymore. It's a different financial equation.
And I can tell you as a real-world example, 'cause I also assisted Hadley. Now, Hadley is a self-directed program. Um, they're on track to lose above, you know, their enrollment is less than Granby, not much. Their drop in enrollment is not as significant, but they're on track to lose about five thousand dollars this year, and that's with the district contributing thirty thousand dollars at the front end of the year. And we'll do it again this July first. So they're losing thirty-five thousand dollars.
I, I oversee East Hampton, they're in a similar boat to Granby. And subsidy and, yeah, so, but please, share with us whatever benchmarks we can analyze, we'll get you the, whatever questions, and we'll provide some revenue stream ideas, um, to Mark.
We are hopeful with the new East Meadow kitchen and cafeteria being a brighter environment. A lot of times, participation does increase, and hopefully we're open to utilize that and, and push the, the menu that works, and we have new menus and items coming up that can be used in that newer kitchen, that hopefully that'll also benefit the, uh, participation and the revenue.
And so that's kinda the other reason why we wanted to bring this forward, is because the process here is, you know, this, this renewal for the contract has to go to DESI Nutrition to be reviewed and approved before it can come back to be signed. And with the sensitivity of food service and its costs in this town, I'm wanting to make sure everybody's seen it, we've talked through it, before it comes back approved, so that there's, you know, there's, everything's on the table and everybody can see what, you know, what the issues are and what we're looking at for next year.
Well, you know we're gonna be riding you guys through the year.
But there's not supposed to be a fifteen percent increase, 'cause that's, well, I'm saying, like, I think what you said, there's, there's a recommendation for, for fifteen cent increase.
No, there should be no, no price increase next year, unless that's just because it's.
Unless that's just because it's, it does say above the two fifty and two sixteen, so that would've been the year before.
That was last year, yeah.
Okay.
But this year's does say with no increase, and that's, I think you guys said you're gonna strike this, so.
Yeah. Couple revisions that need to, yeah, sure.
Any other questions?
If that's it, we appreciate your time. Thank you.
It's great. Thank you very much. Yeah, have a good evening.
Thank you for coming out.
So on with budget?
Yes, on with the.
Well, at least if this wasn't covered as part of Andrew's discussion, at least May's numbers made money, so that's good, contributed to the nine thousand dollars.
Which, which?
That would be, so this was the summary that he did, just comparing it to last year. This in your packet and in the, in the drive is the May results.
Right.
So May actually had a profit of four hundred and sixty-one dollars. So that brought the deficit down to nine thousand three twenty-two.
Right.
Um, and then.
We're not signing the contract yet, correct?
No.
Okay. 'Cause I, you know, I, um, I don't know if I, or if the school committee signs anything, but just until we have this full conversation, let's just hold off on this.
Well, I'll try to get some legs around what the deadline is for DESI, 'cause I know that there's a point where they like to get the contracts, review them and approve them. They can't be signed by the local authority until DESI agrees on the contract, so, you know, we should probably vet any changes. I'll reach out to these guys and see exactly, you know, what the timeframes are for that point, and I'll be at point. I think it's usually by September first, but, um, you know, it might be tighter than that.
This is, this is one of the weirdest things that I, I know. I mean, a lot of things in, in school finance tends to be interesting, uh, but.
Say the least.
Yeah. That, that, this, this is interesting. Everybody knows that there is a problem, a deficit problem somewhere, right? But nobody's doing anything about it. So, at the end of the year, at the end of the day too, but at the end of the year, the whole burden falls on the, uh, school districts, one. Number two, it is, it goes up and down, up and down, you don't even know where you're gonna be. In our case, we do know more or less where, you know, we're gonna end up in this situation. But the, the concept that something will lose money and not explore how it, it should not lose money.
They're budgeting to use that.
Yeah. So we're bu, we're budgeting for contingencies that exist in, in, uh, in the budget.
That's bothering me. And, and the thing is, is that, you know, as, as one of, one of the two people that really watches what people in town are saying on Facebook, which i- it is a thermometer for our town, I keep seeing it coming up over and over and over again. It came up today, literally. So, does any, 'cause people don't watch the program. So, you know, does, does any of the, oh, this new override cover that, that deficit for lunch? I mean, it keeps, because they're not listening, and they don't watch meetings, and they don't listen to all of us saying that's taken care of. But the point is, if they then see this and they wa, they happen to pick up one meeting, which is today, and they find out, so you guys are budgeting for a fifteen thousand dollar shortfall, that really makes no sense to any of us.
So, so is there, is there a way we can get creative with, I mean, the labor cost is the most expensive piece of the whole thing. It's like a dollar seventy-seven per, per meal, right? I'm sure some of it is driven by the, the locations and the, you know, the periods we're serving, but is there any way we can try to think of ways to fix it?
He did take a look at that. I think that's why the, why we are only at nine thousand as opposed to what we have been in past, um, years. There does come a point where, um, if you reduce labor too significantly, we can't serve the students fast enough in the short, non-timely hack. Um, so, you know, you run into having the ability to serve in a timely fashion, um, so that students have time to eat.
But is there a way we can look at it the other way and figure out ways to shorten the lunch periods, or combine lunch periods in some ways to not need, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Right. I, you know, I don't know, for, I, I'm, I'm looking at this a little bit differently, for, for, uh, you know, at the end of this, maybe a nine thousand dollar deficit, to literally turn everything upside down and start talking about changing lunch periods and all of that, to me, doesn't make sense for a nine thousand dollar deficit. Not to mention that, um, you know, this is no different than our school budget. You know, we start off with a budget and literally within three days, we've, something has been thrown at us out of left field, which puts us in a sixty thousand dollar deficit that, that was unanticipated.
But it, but it is weird, though. It's weird that they're a business. Like, how do, how are they surviving if in every district they work in, they have a ten or more thousand dollar deficit? Like, I don't, that literally on, on a business side, which.
They would not be doing this if they were somehow figuring out how to make money.
Right, so.
Exactly.
That's, well, see, and that's, that's, you know.
Yes, I get that. I, I get that, but at the same time, for us to expect that they're not gonna make some kinda profit, I think is unrealistic.
No, it's not, it's not that at all. I just, it's, I kinda feel like.
I don't want, I don't, I don't have any problem with their profit. I just don't wanna lose money.
Right, no. Yeah.
I mean, that, I'm looking at, at our side.
Right.
And how do we, I mean, whether it's getting creative or finding some other way, I don't know what the solution is.
If you raise the price by a nickel. But I mean, I just, it just, it just, I'm, I'm where you are, that I'm like, how, why is it that you're, like, they literally are budgeting for that contingency? So why, why do we even, why isn't that just part of our lunch pr, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's just weird to me that there's not a way for them to budget closer without, it's just every year we're having the same conversation where they're, it's already in the budget that we're going to have this problem.
Right. And I think that part of, you know, the conversation that you hear in the public is, well, years ago, we made money. You know, years ago.
We know they didn't, so.
You could sell soda.
Right.
And you could sell Snapples, and you could sell cookies.
Chocolate chip cookies and brownies and, yeah.
Ice cream bars.
Right, and so you had.
Chocolate pears and strawberries, okay, right.
You had four hundred more students, right?
Right, yeah, right.
Yes, I get it. So.
Well, we did become negative with our own program, which is why we switched over. So I mean, I, I, it's just confusing, and it's hard. Like, as, as a school committee member, when people are talking about this and they say to me, why are you, why are you allowing it? And I'm like, I don't, I have no answer. I don't, it doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I would certainly hope that our goal of, um, turning around enrollment, um, keeping more of our kids, you know, to be, with a more, um, school choice in,
Yeah, I hope, and that's, that's gotta be a big deal.
We would start to see, you know, we were very close this year with the exception of the error in the schedule that, um, was not communicated, um, and therefore, um, was a cost to us, an unanticipated cost. Um, I, I'm actually very hopeful, um, that if we're this close right now, that with a turn in enrollment, you would be able to see a sustainable lunch program, because Andrew has worked very hard and done some very creative things throughout the school year. Um, and I think that everybody is very clear that it is a commitment of this committee and the administration to keep our eyes on that, because we want our kids to be healthy, we want them to be well-fed, we want them to participate.
Right, right. I'm not willing to do, I'm not willing to cut this deficit at the expense of the food program that we have now, because we do get positive feedback. And the other thing too is, I think we have to take our own advice. We are asking folks to be patient, that we're trying to turn a whole tide around, and, and this goes to the lunch program
There's clearly a trend that is, you know.
as well. You know, this is something that went on well before any of us were on this committee.
Mm-hmm.
A huge problem that we had to correct, and I really firmly believe, and they, and they confirmed it, that it is directly correlated to the number of students, and I think we have to be patient, that we're on top of this. We, we have quarterly meetings with them, you know, you guys are watching it, so I th, I think we have to be a little patient.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, next item, seventeen?
All right. So, budget, seventeen budget. So, the results of operations are in your packet. To this point, through May, we've used, we have twenty-one percent of the budget remaining, or one point eight three two million dollars. And, but bear in mind that the reason why there's such a significant amount left with one month is because we also have the summer pays that have to be paid out as part of payroll. So what I try to do, if you look at that last column that says local budget, I look at the positives and minuses that are not salary and that could apply to, um, paying our bills. And if you look at the bottom of that, there's a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars available, for which we could pay for, um, additional expenses. We know we have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in school choice that can't be charged to school choice, because we have no more school choice money, so. Or that. And then in addition to that, we have the regular monthly expenses that come in. So, you know, with that, and obviously bear in mind that we need to get through July, because July obviously has June bills come in. But with fifty thousand dollar cushion, and now we just had another sixty thousand five hundred added to it, voted by the town, because the sixty thousand five hundred that was coming out of, um, the, to it, the sped transportation line, if you look at the sped transportation line on page two, uh, that, at the point that we did this, there was eighty-seven thousand dollars remaining, and I do not use that as part of the subtraction, 'cause until the vote, that wasn't available money that we could say would be part of the cushion to, to get us through the rest of the year. Now that it is, if we add that back in, we have about a hundred thousand dollars in additional expenses that we can, uh, we have available to absorb the, the charges that come in through June. So, I'm, I'm cautiously optimistic that we will be able to get through, um, the budget in the black without having to dip into the small reserves that we have in school choice and circuit breaker. Um, and the grants, for the most part, are going to be expended. The, the balances that you would see in there are, for the most part, just salaries that are gonna be charged out again with the summer pays, because there's four, five more paychecks to be taken out of each of those. I can say, I, you know, I worked with Karen today on the DPH grant, there is thirty-seven cents left available in that grant, so that, that's spent. Title one is spent. Title two, we may have a cushion. Um, the sped IDA grant has fifty-seven ninety-seven, that's just gonna be a reclass, because the tuitions we charged there, it didn't come out to an even dollar amount to the grant amount, so we'll just do some reclassing, and the other grants will be spent out. So that's where FY seventeen is.
So you're sounding cautiously optimistic.
I am, I'm sleeping better. Let's see.
Okay.
And we may not, we may not get to that, uh, cushion either, this, uh, if we get some luck?
We'll see, yeah. I mean, it all comes down to all the expenses that roll in for June and July, for June. I mean, one of the things I've been working on is trying to get this, since it just went online in, um, the end of February, this Kierzage contract with the electricity, 'cause we're saving thirteen to seventeen hundred dollars a month, but National Grid is still billing us. And what's supposed to happen is, the credits from Kierzage are supposed to go directly on our bills, then we pay Kierzage a difference, so we, we pay eighty percent. So we get a hundred percent of the credit, we pay them back eighty, so our savings is twenty percent of whatever the percentage of the farm generates that we are able to take advantage of. Well, National Grid hasn't posted anything yet, so now we have our June bills, and I've been working with them to say, okay, we need to get the credits on here, because we can't pay National Grid and we can't pay you. We can only pay one person. So we've been trying to do this cleanup work and, you know, try to get that all to apply, so we can get FY seventeen settled out.
Okay.
Much easier.
All right, how is, uh, FY eighteen? We don't, do we have anything on FY eighteen? We just?
Uh, no, just to remind, um, the committee and folks who are watching, uh, regarding the override vote, um, and, uh, what the remainder of the return to the budgets would be, um, if we, uh, were able to positively, uh, have a positive vote on the override. To me, uh, it's, uh, I don't know.
Uh, yep. No, I have it here.
Oh, you did?
I have it. Oops, that's the wrong color. That's the right?
Yes. Um, so, uh, with the town meeting vote, uh, we were able to return um, I think three, six, uh, full positions and a, uh, half position. So those were returned, uh, to the budget. Um, that is mainly the middle school, uh, positions, the first grade position, and the high school science position, and then the half-year retirement position. So, um, moving, uh, to what would be returned in the override, it was, if I can remind the committee, uh, the decision to keep the data manager position, um, in the budget, if possible.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we are still, um, at two positions reduced, uh, one is special education and one in English language arts program at the high school. The reductions, if we were not to get the override, would include, um, the lunch monitors. Uh, it would also include our sped tuition, uh, contingency, which we have in the budget, which is very important for, um, if we have, uh, sped tuitions come into the district. Um, and then not to forget the three paraprofessional positions that would be eliminated in the budget, uh, if the override does not pass. And then finally, the elementary team leaders, uh, which are a side position, uh, that would be eliminated as well. So I just wanna remind people that, um, we are still talking about, um, six positions, sorry, five positions, um, and three position.
Do we have that anywhere that can be posted?
We can, I can do another flyer, I think, uh, that was helpful for town meeting.
That would be great, yeah. Can we also have it for online? If you can send some. Can we also have it for online? If you can send something, one of us can put it on the Facebook page and on town meeting. Cause people, people really need to, they really need to see physically what we'll be losing
Yeah. Good at flyers.
Yes, I agree.
if that override doesn't go through because there's very, you know, a lot of competing posts on
Yes.
the town meeting site about how much your taxes are going up. So people really need to be able to, like, tend to be.
Mm-hmm.
Can we include that? Can we include that information on this flyer?
Um, I think I can, I can provide the information regarding the positions of the budget.
Right.
I think then it would be, it would move toward, you know, you folks to talk about, uh, tax implications.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, it would probably make sense to also include what we were able to bring back because of the stabilization funds, not only the override, but just the full amounts.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
I agree, mm-hmm. This is what town meeting brought back and this is what was.
Definitely, yes. Thanks, thanks to the town residents. This is what we were able to bring back and this is what's on the table now.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
I, and I think it's important that, um, what people also understand is that the override goes to the base of the budget.
Yes.
And so we've been having this discussion, you've been having this discussion and this frustration for six, seven years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because the base of the budget doesn't support the instructional program.
Exactly, mm-hmm.
Um, and that's what we're up against. And so with the override, if we're able to build the base of the budget by the two ninety-six, seven ninety-nine, we look at enrollment improving, um, we start to build the turnaround so that we have, uh, financial footing to now build programs.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
as opposed to always being at this table and having to have the conversation about cutting.
Right.
Um, and that's not to say that, you know, we will face, um, health insurance increases and income increases. Um, but again, I think the discussion, um, with the town prior to the moment, uh, the town meeting vote, uh, is going to be important next year, as we move forward.
So that, that is going to be part of our next charge, right, is, um, uh, really trying to push with the other committees, starting the pro- budget process sooner and trying to increase the base and, right, that's, that's our next priority?
Yeah. Yeah. I had a conversation with Chris about that. Um, there is a timeline draft, um, that I'll put on the next school meeting agenda.
Mm-hmm. Good news. Mm-hmm.
Um, it is going to require a joint conversation with the, um, select board, uh, because it would have an impact on the, uh, town meeting date.
Mm.
Um, and also when all of the departments would have to get their budgets, uh, to the town manager for approval. But it really makes a lot of sense to do that.
So, so you'll bring that to us the next, at the July meeting? Because we really have to get it out in front of us.
At the July.
Mm-hmm.
So he, you know, Chris took a look at it. He had some suggestions, some very good suggestions, um, and then also made the suggestion that at some point, we would have to have a joint meeting with the board. Or at least bring it to the, to the.
If there's some way that we can, uh, maybe set a, a, a date, like a, a drop dead date where we wanna do that at the next meeting?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
So we don't have too much time?
It doesn't get away from us.
Yes, because you know how that, when this gear, gears back up, uh, you know, our priorities start to change and this has to stay on the, the priority list.
It does.
Yeah.
The more we go into the year, it becomes a reaction. You have to really.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely. We need to be proactive.
Yeah, definitely.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and we have to be able to explain, and, um, I don't get to go online, especially in the last so many weeks, uh, you know, days are not ending. Uh, but what I'm understanding is that the conversation again is around, you know, the cost of the building plus, you know, uh, everything else that we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Where I'm failing to understand that, that argument is that you can't have a building without education in it.
Right.
And we obviously, you know, are trying to get to the point where we can have a s- uh, sustainable, first more sustainable and hopefully at one point, uh, self-sustaining, uh, school district. Even these folks are talking about just five years ago. I mean, five years, we did not give up on the school district. Five years ago, we had enough students to, to do, uh, things, different things because we had the numbers. We may not have the same numbers back,
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
but we can budget for the numbers that we have. We have to look at this as an investment and, uh, you know, uh, tomorrow we have the groundbreaking, but hopefully, you know, we're not groundbreaking a school that we're not intending to, uh, to supplement with the education that we want to give to the students. And that's, that, that, when, the whole conversation is based on numbers. Some of these, uh, important
Mm-hmm.
aspects of the conversation, they get lost and, um, hopefully we'll get back to it, uh, soon enough. But this conversation that we're having is critical. If we do not put that in front of everyone early enough, and we wait and wait and wait until, you know, uh, a point we have to react to all these things, uh, then it becomes impossible to manage. It becomes very stressful for everyone on all sides. And, um, and we'll let the narrative, the wrong narrative to actually take hold, uh, inaccurate narrative, I should say.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so we have to really, uh, walk everyone through the process and explain why we're doing what we're doing.
You know, the other thing too is, this is sys- systemic change. You know, we're changing dates. You know, if we're asking to change the date of town meeting and that affects everybody else's budget. You know, we have to be cognizant of, you know, change, change is not usually a positive for most people, right? And we need to give as much notice as possible, uh, because it's the respectful and considerate thing to do. So, we have to stay on top of this.
Right. Agree.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and I think, you know, to your point, not only is it systemic change for dates, but it's a systemic change for how we develop the budget together as a team.
Yes, absolutely.
And that the conversations start actively in July, when the Senate budget is finally approved and the real number comes out. And that's the first time that we have a meeting about FY eighteen, so that everyone is understanding about, you know, what the changes in the budget have been. Um, and so then also, when we get our first enrollment numbers, we have a meeting with everyone to say, okay, this is the impact on our budget
Mm-hmm.
and this is, you know, the direction that we need to consider as we are, begin our budget discussions for FY nineteen in November.
Yes. And even that, i- is, is a different approach to have with been doing things. We did not get any indication of what the numbers might be until October first before. Understandably, that's the official number. But if the driver of this thing is the number of students, and we still are looking at some opportunity to be able to have these conversations, we don't need to wait until October first and have the exact same number we're sharing with Desi.
Mm-hmm.
If it's too down, too up, whatever it is, it gives us an indication as to whether we're on the right path or not and take action around it. Uh, and if that, that number is available in the summer, uh, before even the school starts, that's a good way for us to look at how we are, we are doing. And we, we missed a few opportunities by not doing that in the past years, but hopefully, you know, looking forward, we're gonna be able to, uh, fix some of that.
Can you guys get me on Facebook to, to this, whatever you guys are referring to, without me having a Facebook page? I mean, is it public? Can I just?
No. No.
I don't think so.
I don't like that. I don't want to be a member of a, uh.
Yeah.
Well, then you have to get a Facebook.
I don't wanna get on Facebook.
Yeah.
You could go on with a fake name, you know what I mean?
Yeah, test user.
Um, do we have anything else on FY, FY eighteen?
Can I do something like that?
People, people do want fake names, yeah.
Oh, you don't feel that?
Anything else on FY eighteen that you want to?
I'm kidding, you know.
Uh, no, only, uh, in communicating the, we're just looking for the flyer, basically, and.
You know, I'd rather. You know. You have to get a fake name, do a Gmail address or something, so that you can read.
Are we sidebaring?
I think we are sidebaring.
No. No, I'm sorry. No, we're talking Facebook.
I have never seen that.
Okay.
It's me, me, sorry, sorry.
Um, so, I like Emery, this is, it's only eight ten.
Let's keep doing our job.
Eight twelve.
Okay.
Okay, this is the last one, I know. But, um.
Kathy just looked up in total shock.
So.
For ten.
I will send, uh, I will create that, um, send it to Emery for review and then get it out by Wednesday and, you know.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
That's perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tim always gets the, uh, four, five, or six.
Are we doing anything on the calendar? Are we all ready or?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I do have the calendar. Uh, so there is a memo, um, to you
Yeah. Yep.
regarding the, um, there. Um, so in discussions with everyone, here is the final, uh, changes. No change to graduation date. I had heard that there was some, uh, question about that. No, for this year, um, the date is June second, um, which is the first Saturday, um, but certainly something with Steven, I think that we will be considering. As the reason for it being the first is no longer, we don't have a road race on the second weekend anymore, so that will have a lot to take up in the future. Um, but the fall, uh, conference dates, um, uh, would be a change for everyone. They would be later to give teachers more time and students, um, to understand them as learners, um, get more assessments, um, information and data to share. So the recommendation is for, um, both of the Gravy Junior Senior High School, um, and the elementary to have their conferences on November seventh and eighth. And then the elementary school, we have one additional, uh, conference on the ninth.
Okay.
And then the spring, uh, Gravy Junior Senior High School will stay at February first, but the elementary schools, uh, will be March twenty-first and twenty-seventh.
Do we know why they are so far apart?
Uh, again, it's more about for the, uh, elementary school, it is to get them, um, a second round of data, uh, and even a third round of data. Um, and the high school, I believe they felt, um, it was, uh, sort of midpoint in the second quarter. Um, or early enough in the second quarter where if a child in a full year course needs to get out, uh, strong correction,
Mm-hmm.
um, we can reach out to parents and, and make that connection. Uh, March was really, they felt too late, uh, to, to have that change, um, in student
To have a.
output perhaps, uh, towards the end of the year.
Yeah.
And so they're all on the same page now?
Yes, totally. Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen calendar.
Second pass?
But these are, these are amendments to the calendar. The calendar, yeah.
This, yeah. The other thing we're gonna add to the calendar, um, will be the report card dates, um, which have not been on, um, which, but really shouldn't be on, some parents are aware of when their report cards will come
Yeah.
close of grades, close quarters.
Since you men, yeah, you mentioned report cards, uh, this is a little, um, off, but are we changing the, the, the system that allows, uh, students, parents to go and check what's, what's the thing?
No, we're staying with Rediker.
Okay. So are, do we have a different approach to using it? Because I'm not sure that it is, uh, consistently used across the board.
Right, um, so it's not used, um, K through twelve at this point, um, by all staff. Um, the grades five, six, I believe, receive training in the portal. Um, and so the idea is that, yes, um, now that it's been up and running, uh, we will add some expectation, um, and so that there's consistency in what teachers are providing in terms of feedback, um, the amount of the, you know, are we going to post grades every two weeks? Um, you know, are we posting assignments? Every teacher's going to have a webpage within Rediker, um, so those consistencies will be developed over time.
Right.
Cause it is inconsistent, absolutely.
It is inconsistent and, you know, if, for some students, I'm assuming, if you find out two weeks later that something that you had two weeks ago is, is, wasn't a paper, it wasn't really up to par is you would probably want to know when that, uh, evaluation had been made. So I thought the purpose was to improve that communication interaction so that they could have the conversations necessary. Um, and I'm not sure that it is, it is serving that purpose. Obviously, there is some investment for, uh, training, learning, and then the application until we get used to it. But it's a muscle to grow, just like any other application, uh, yeah.
Absolutely. Um, and there's an oversight piece as well. Um, you know, there is the, you know, just like lesson plans, it's checking and giving feedback. It's the same. You know, here's the portal, here's the feedback to anyone who's using the portal. You know, this is really, you know, this is outstanding, good feedback to the student or, um, to families. It's.
It's an added layer of grading too, that, you know, I mean, it's just, it's more time consuming and it's an, it's an added layer.
Yeah. Professional.
Um, I agree though, if we're, if we're going to implement a system like that, it needs to be consistent.
Right.
Um, so, es- especially as a parent of somebody who went through the systems, you know, I could call, I could call my kids on something and they'd be like, well, I just took a test and, you know, or I took a test five days ago and it's still not up there and, you know.
Right. It really is about our assessment system, which is something that we'll be looking at this year, uh, moving forward. Um, our K, our pre-K twelve assessment system, how we're giving feedback, the assessments that we're giving, even our assessments of the elementary school are inconsistent for reading and for math and for writing.
Okay.
Um, and so we, we have a lot of work to do in that area, so that students and families know what kind of growth is expected. Um, you know, I've never been a proponent of keeping kids at grade level. We really should know where the kids are when they enter with us and we should have an expectation of where they would be with instruction and where they would be at the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And that's going to be a mindset that is gonna take some time, because it's about assessment and feedback, not necessarily teaching and grading.
Mm.
And so that's the professional conversation that we'll be having next year.
Yeah.
I appreciate the fact that you said we have a lot, we have a lot, um, to do in that area. You know, that, I mean, that's step number one is, is.
Oh, yeah. I think teachers are excited to do it. It's built into how we look at curriculum too. You know, looking at, um, understanding by design as we create units.
Mm-hmm.
You know, is it, are my assignments rigorous? Do they meet the mission and vision of the school to be engaged learners in a global society with hands-on, real-world learning experiences? Or have I given a worksheet and a paper pencil test? And so the conversation really is about curriculum and assessment and what we're doing, the learning experiences we're creating with kids. And I, people are excited to do the work.
Cool.
Good.
Thank you. Uh, and of course, it's not worth, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
From.
A second?
Okay. Any other conversation about the amendments we're making to the, uh, seventeen eighteen school year calendar? Any questions? Okay. All in favor, uh, to approve the amendments as presented, please say aye.
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 Thank you for doing this. I know it's been, uh, going back and forth for a while, but, uh, finally done.
Yeah. A lot of wars and a lot of water at the same time.
Yeah. Um, next, we have our standing reports. Uh, the first one is our superintendent's report.
I did, given the length of the agenda, I didn't realize we would go through it so quickly. I'm very impressed.
Okay.
Um, I did not prepare one because I was taking a lot of time in the studios.
It's good. Yep, no, it's good. Did you have any meetings just collab, collaborative yet?
I got in touch with them. The next meeting is next Wednesday, so.
Okay, all right, cool, so.
They're excited to meet you.
Sarah?
Yes.
Um, West Street Building Committee, the only thing that, uh, I will say is that tomorrow is, uh, groundbreaking.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm, I'm hearing that it's gonna be a better day, uh, tomorrow, yes, gonna be.
Looks like it's, I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, it's a, it's a new beginning. Uh, it's, it should be nice and there are, uh, folks who will be there, including, uh, someone from MSBA.
Nice.
Uh, the Massachusetts, uh, School Building Authority. Uh, so I'm looking forward to it. So that's all, that's all we have, and we had a meeting last week, but, uh, there are some conversations around some of the, uh, the furnitures, um, because those decisions are about to be made. Um, all, all I could get, um, with regards to budget was that we are, we are on budget, so there are no real, uh, uh, commitments to any numbers.
Mm.
But as it stands, my understanding is that we are, uh, somewhat under the budget, uh, which is a good thing if we can, uh,
Mm.
Stay there.
uh, stay that way because hopefully we're not expecting any major, uh, changes. For instance, uh, for the library building, they had hit, uh, ledges and that caused some, uh, some changes. Uh, here, we already have the foundation in place and we have not seen anything. The well, I believe, is going well. Uh, the, uh, and there, there are no issues with the, uh, septic system as far as I understand. So those were big issues, but we have to get a final word from the DEP. Uh, hopefully it's positive, then it may be another good step forward.
Can you make sure that somebody puts me on the list for that meeting? Cause I'm supposed to be on it and nobody told me.
Sure. That actually is a good point. I wonder if at this point, uh.
Is Marie gonna join the building meeting? So you have to go to town hall and be certified as.
Mm.
Yeah, so we have to, I, I'll ask, I'll ask, uh, Mark and you will be.
Usually you get a, yeah, usually you get a, you get a letter that tells you, so, which I didn't get.
Yeah, so, right.
Yep, so, so I will, uh, I will ask Mark. Okay, sure. Um.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and as a school committee member, you just show up, right?
Yes.
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
Tomorrow, yes.
Okay.
We're gonna make you talk.
Uh, Jen, Policy Subcommittee?
That's not happening.
We need to schedule that.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have, that means we don't have anything, uh, for the Policy Subcommittee.
Exactly.
Some of the project.
Um, that. Um that's all we had for our open session this evening. We have a um, is, was there anything else that we missed? Anything that we were supposed to? Okay.
Isn't even.
So with that, we're going to have a executive session. We're going to vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty eight. Section twenty one, Part eight three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Is there a roll call, please?
DM Kay Murkowski, aye. Jennifer Curran, aye. Maureen McCourt, aye.
Emery Avron, aye.
Yeah, Mike Simpson, aye.
Okay. Thank you and have a good evening.